Roll call and get started. So. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful. So we'll do a quick roll call vote, or not roll call vote, I'm sorry, roll call attendance, just to say that we're all here. And you know, the norm when we say who's with us. Again, this is public, but we do it. So I'm present and there is no one with me in the room. Janet?
I am present and there is no one here.
No one. And thank you for using your alone time with us, right?
Exactly.
Karen?
I am present, sort of, and there is a room with me.
Janice?
I am present and there is no one in the room with me.
So Heaney?
I'm present and there is no one in the room with me right now, but my dog might come in sometime.
Well, we all know that one, right? Wonderful. And good morning, Yvette.
Good morning. I just want to let you know I'm recording this. So when we go into non-public, I'll stop the recording. But and just also to let you know, the recordings have been uploaded to the YouTube channel for the libraries. You can always access them if you wanted to go over something.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for doing that. And the non-public session is on there. If we feel when we go into the discussion of the library director's evaluation process, just because, you know, we had some concerns about the last way it went. And so we want to be able to freely discuss what we think is the best way to proceed going forward. So before we get started with the items on our agenda, we do have some housekeeping things. I did sign a P A R, which I let you know about earlier in the week. And it was to promote Samantha Diggin's from part-time page aide to aide. I would make like to make a motion that we promote Samantha Diggin's from part-time page aide to aide.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. Is there any discussion? Does anyone have any questions for Yvette?
It's still part-time, right?
It's super time, yeah.
It's a 20-hour position.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry, I didn't clarify that. So, yep.
It's been posted for a year. Happy about this.
Great. And so I am going to vote yes. Janet?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
And Soheaney?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 5-0-0. And I think that this revised way of handling this is much more smooth as far as the process goes. So I hope that you agree with that. If there's ever any concerns about the new way we've been doing this, just let me know. I wanted to give you an update on the Quimby Trust. I know that I reached out to Krista because I had not heard from her after my December 17th email. And she let me know that she had sent the signed document to attorney Upton last week. So I will be reaching out to him to ask where we are in that process and when I can sign that. So that's where we are. We're moving forward. Yes.
Would you just say that again? I'm sorry.
Sure. I reached out to Krista from the Courier Law Firm. And I'm sorry, I don't know her last name.
That's okay. I just, I was summarizing in my head and I didn't do a very good job.
And I just wanted an update. And she told me that the trust document had been signed and they had sent it to attorney Matt Upton last week. So now I'm going to follow up with him and see when we can do the signature that you authorized me to do. So that gets completed.
Thank you.
So you're welcome. We did have also the person who expressed an interest in being an alternate trustee. I have sent him an email inviting him to our next meeting and asking him to reach out with any questions or concerns. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. So if you see a new face at our next meeting, you'll know who it is. And I can send you, I can send you information, like his information too, if you want, Janet. Okay. So.
I was like, can we say his name?
Yeah. You know, I'm, I, I could tell you his email address because it's very distinctive and I have it off the top of my head, but I can't tell you his last name for sure. So I will just send you the information. I'll forward it to you guys. So let me make a note to myself on that. The final thing that I wanted, Karen?
I'm just assuming that you're speaking of our January 19th meeting.
That's, that's correct. And I told him that it was seven, but that that one we might move to 6:30 if I, because we wanted to have more time. So I, I was unsure when I sent the email. I just wanted to get the invitation out to him. But I can follow up that it's going to be at 6:30. Um, and the other thing was that I did have an opportunity to speak with Anna Cole, who was wonderful. She got back to me with some excellent information. So this is in regards to the changing of the term of employment for Yvette. So I have more information for you. And I guess I'm going to ask you if you would like me to go through that now or if you'd prefer to wait until we get through the items on our agenda and then I can give you an update on that. So it's up to you guys, however you'd like to handle that.
I'd like to go through the agenda.
Okay, perfect. And if we don't get to this, I mean, this is an ongoing project and it will be very quick for us to move forward with it. So let's go through the agenda then. Okay. I love a decisive, like, yes, go through the agenda. So let's do that first.
My opinion.
Does anyone just? Okay, perfect. Then we're great. Okay. So I just wanted to get those things out of the way to keep you informed and let you know where we were. The first thing on our agenda was to review the goals and action items from our September retreat. So I have them right before me. I got them from the minutes that were posted on the trustee website. And Yvette, I actually have a request for you regarding minutes. Going forward, would it be a hassle for those to be put up as a PDF?
No.
That would be wonderful, just for those of us who don't have Microsoft Word. And so sometimes we try to open it and it asks us to go into Office 365. So a PDF would just mean we could get it wherever.
No problem.
Great, thank you. Okay. So the first item. Janet crapped to contact Paul McCally to discuss memo of understanding between the Library Board of Trustees and the town.
I talked with him and I asked if there was any agreement. He said no. And he said, it's just a handshake agreement that the town takes care of the library stuff.
Okay. And so is that like considered done? Or do you feel like we need to have that memo of understanding?
I'm done.
Okay, we'll check it out. Yvette, Yvette?
You should have one.
I figured.
I mean, if you, if you maybe think back to things that you've heard anecdotally at the NHL LTA conference, sometimes I hear things at the NHL conferences and stuff where you run into a problem down the road, you know, because there was no written agreement. And that can be renewed every year.
Sure.
You know, but then at least it's in writing. You don't have to think about it. You know, there was no written agreement when we had the can shed here.
Right.
And that, and that wasn't, wasn't a positive conversation. It wasn't pleasant. And so, you know, just write it up, whatever's going down. And then, you know, if they ever have concerns too, they can come to you and say, hey, we, we want to look at this again.
Well, it was interesting because when I asked him about it, he's like, no, it's just a handshake agreement. And it's interesting with the two different sides because he says, he's like, yeah, it's so that the library doesn't have to pay for a bookkeeper. We just take care of it. And I thought, okay, yeah, that's true. But of course, on my side, I also was like, yes, but there's also a lot of responsibility that now, like you guys, you as the town have to handle that the library board doesn't have to handle. So it was just an interesting conversation or just different perspectives.
Soheaney, please.
Karen, you can go first.
I just, I may, may just have a blank spot. But I, can, can somebody expand on what this memo of understanding is? Because it is not coming to me. What is the memo of understanding that we are supposed to have with the town? What, what is it regarding? And I put some of it together from what Janet said, but I'd just like to hear. It's just not coming back to me that we talked about it.
Okay. So there's, I, it's like one of the, under one of the duties for the trustees, under the RSA 202.
Yep.
Whatever. In one of them, it says there's an agreement per, per agreement per the town pursuant to this RSA in terms of payment to the library trustees to then pay, pay all the bills that the trustees, excuse me, that the library incurs. So the trustees would get quarterly, semi-annually, whatever is agreed upon, the budget, the money. And then the board pays all the library bills. That's how some towns in New Hampshire work. They get a pot of money at some agreed upon time from the town. And then the trustees pay the library bills. We don't do that. The town takes care of all of that. They take care of payroll. They take care of all the bills. The library, Yvette and staff pay, submit the invoices with the correct line item and whatnot, or line account, and send it to the town and they pay it. So some towns get the money and they have everything listed in the manifest and go through it and see every single thing that's bubble gums that are purchased.
Okay.
Where the town takes care of it for us.
Okay.
So she, I'm sorry, but it's 202A, B, 11, um, 3. And this is under powers and duties of trustees. Expend all monies raised and appropriated by the town or city for library purposes and shall direct that such monies be paid over by the town or city treasurer pursuant to a payment schedule as agreed to by library trustees in the selectmen or city council. So that's what Janet is saying is money is given. But right now, we, we just submit the invoices and they get processed.
Right.
You know, so, but some libraries, usually I hear it's the smaller towns where they're given, it's almost like the library has given an allowance.
Right.
Kind of like how the friends do it, where they give us $300 and then we have to kind of pay for it, you know? So I think it's, you know, it's fine if there's an agreement, but I think, um, you know, if it's at least written down. And I want to say, you know, more recently with, with the newer board members, you know, Janet and Karen, when Laura was on the board, it was, how do you do things? Where's the written down procedure for that? It's in our heads. So for me, this is similar to that. And if you want to have, if you want to have procedures written down, especially for new folks who come in and want to know, how do you do things? Then this is just another thing that, why don't you have this written down too?
That's the reason.
That's the RSA. It's 202-a, colon, 11, 3.
Yep. I, I agree. And that was the reason I was raising my hand. Like if we have something written down, it's easier for the next board members whoever come in for the town, as well as for the library, to handle. So you're like, we are handling this employment hire thing. We had to change it to make it more efficient. So things like that. If we have something written down, it's easier for somebody to take over from here. And it will be within the regulations and the bylaws, but something, the process in writing that the town will help with this, 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 and we will have, like the board will have, or the trustee will have, like access to this kind of, you know, direct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Karen, go ahead.
One, one last quick thing, which is now that it's been clarified and Janet didn't get much of a response from Paul, except that it's always been a handshake agreement. And we are hearing now that it's, might be an important thing to have and not unreasonable to have some kind of a document. Now, what do we do?
Good question. Yvette, any recommendations for the best approach?
Well, I, you know, you can go back to Paul and, and reopen the conversation and refer to the RSA. The RSA is talking about the selectmen or the town councils. So that's the next level is, is putting this thing in writing.
I wonder if there's, do you know of any other G-Milks libraries who have an agreement that we can at least look at before we go forward and say, we want this agreement? But then we don't even know what we want the agreement to say. It would be nice to see somebody else's agreement to see if, and just to use it as, yeah, thank you, a template so that we can get an idea. Because, yeah, I think to keep going back and saying we want an agreement when we don't even know really what exactly the agreement would say might not be the most efficient way to handle things. So.
I'll find out.
Okay.
I was also wondering, is that, given the different perspectives, yes, it's a handshake and whatnot, but is there, are there legal ramifications in terms of responsibility of money? In terms of, because by the way, the RSA is written, the trustees are like responsible for different payments. Well, we don't pay things, so then the responsibility falls on the town. So.
I think it always falls on the town. You know, I mean, uh, but Paul has talked about that in terms of, you know, insurance, things being covered, you know? So it would always default to the town having to.
So can we, can we put it on as an action item that Yvette, we'll see if she can find copies of an, any MOUs from similar libraries, you know, with libraries that are in similar situations? You know, I think that we are kind of in between the Manchester Nashua's and the Amherst Milford. So if, you know, we get a couple of them that we can look at and see as far as size goes and see what is out there. And then we can make a decision how to proceed going forward. I think it's a lot easier to be like, hey, Paul, we were talking to some other libraries and this is what they have. And we're open to suggestions, but we feel like this, just for continuity from board to staff at the town would be a helpful thing for everybody. And at least we have a starting place. So, okay. So that's, let's put that as an action item and move on to the next goal from September. The Personnel Committee was to meet with the library director regarding her response to her evaluation and report back to the Library Board of Trustees in October. We can consider that done, correct? You guys met with it? The Personnel Committee will present a draft of the Director's Evaluation Form in December. That is also done. I will forward information regarding the Quimby Trust to all members of the Library Board of Trustees, which I have been keeping you up to date on that one. The Library Board of Trustees will submit questions and concerns regarding drafts of trust, which has happened. The library director will find out if town attorney Matt Upton would prefer to look at questions about the draft of the Quimby Trust or get back to us. So we met with him in September. So we are good. We can consider that done. Janet, again, will contact Paul McCally regarding options for merit pay. Did you have a chance to do that?
I did. And he didn't have a really good option. At least not in my head. He basically said that it was hard to do and that it was, well, yeah. It was hard. You know what? I did this so long ago, I don't remember. It was hard to do. There's, because merit pay isn't, it's like subjective. So it's not easily done. It's hard to put in the budget. He, and then how do you schedule it? He, he, he wasn't very helpful. It, I got the feeling from him that it was more of a, it was just difficult to implement.
Okay.
So as then, as well as trying to schedule it. Yeah. Let me try to find my notes because I did it a while ago. I just remember it just, he wasn't, it was just hard to do and to do it satisfactorily, satisfactorily. But, but that doesn't mean that we can't still look into it. It was just in terms of working with the budget, it was just not as easy to do as anticipated.
Okay. So it's still out there as an option, but maybe requires some different approaches or different thoughts on implementation.
There's, exactly. There's board work that needs to be done, not so much Paul, Paul work.
So we'll just kind of have it out there as, especially when we're looking at, we have staff evaluate, Yvette will be doing evaluations. We'll be doing Yvette's evaluation, but then looking forward to the next budget cycle, if that's something that we want to build in, which is, seems a long way off, doesn't it? At this point, since we just finished another budget. So, okay.
Want that as an ongoing action item or rewrite it as a different action item? Or just keep it in mind?
The problem is, the problem is the way that the, the, everything, of course, has to be approved. So that's the problem with respect to the budget. So even if we said, yes, we want to give merit raises to rack and stack people, it's going forward and implementing them. One, the town has to prove it. So even if, even if the board approves it, it may not be approved through the town. The other way that can be done is if we said, all right, we have, we want to, the board wants to approve, let's say, $20,000 for raises. And then as the budget comes in for the following year, like it was like this July, we can, we would say, we have this extra $20,000 that's for raises. And as the budget comes into starting, because the evaluations were already done by Yvette, you can then say, okay, you rack and stack people, we have $20,000 and you do some percentage that gets rid of that 20 and you can just then allocate it. It was just messy.
Okay. Karen?
Philosophically, I have to say that I really, because by its very nature, it is a subjective payment. I am not comfortable with merit pay. And that's just a broad sweeping statement from me that whether it means something or not, I just, I, I do not react well to the concept of money being a reward for some kind of perceived achievement on a regular basis, on a payroll basis like that. For something special, that's different. But for setting up salaries and, and, and pay per hour, I, I, I just have to put in that I, that I, I find that questionable. So, and that's all I have to say about it.
I can understand that perspective completely. You know, because no matter how unbiased we try to be, people who we get along with more, there's just a natural, it's just a natural bias. Right? Well, let's just say that Janet has investigated it. It's all, you know, just like with all things, just because we say, well, it doesn't seem like it's going to be appropriate or easy for us to implement right now, doesn't mean that we don't ever reconsider it again. So Janet?
Well, I, I dare say this actually goes back to something that Paul said in one of our meetings, is that when we do give a sweeping raise, it doesn't, it implies that everybody is doing the same. And we know that's not true. We know that there are some people that are doing, going above and beyond. And it doesn't, and it doesn't, it doesn't set the bar high. It's just the person who's doing just what they need to do is still going to get the raise versus the person who potentially could be making the same pay, who is really going above and beyond and excelling. So, all right, that's just my two cents.
Soheaney?
Yes. So first of all, the merit thing. So I have seen in the corporate world, as well as now I'm watching this over here with the town. So, yeah, it is kind of, it's a very thin line where you can balance it properly. I was wondering that, how we did the special incentive at the year end? I would rather keep that because it goes through like the whole year. We are seeing somebody's going above and beyond and we reward them at the end because they are getting the increases as they come during their evaluations. And there is like a 1% to 3% usually. It gets increased due to the living costs and everything. So I would rather keep it at that as an incentive. It's my feeling that you look through the year, you see how they work and just give them as, at the year of the end incentive. And that way, you know, it doesn't go like a, you have to reach this goal or you have gone above this as for your merit pay. Because the library is not a kind of a business. It's not like, you know, it's a profitable business. But you're, see, I made so much of profit in my business so I can give a merit pay to all my workers who worked hard, kind of. So this is a totally different perspective. So I would say rather keep it as an incentive. Who has, we look through the year and see, we get all these good feedback and reward them accordingly. That's my viewpoint, like.
I, I think that this is a very worthwhile discussion. And I think it's interesting that we are bringing different perspectives to it. And I think it should be continued. But I also want to move through the other action items. And since we're not making a decision on this today, this was just investigating. Can we just sort of, Janet, I, Janice, I wouldn't even say this needs to be put as an action item, but I think that when we, it will come up again and again, whenever we're looking at salaries and evaluations. But I think for today, we should probably keep going. Soheaney?
Yeah. So just to move back a little bit, we were looking about the agreement between the town council and the library trustees. So there are a few on the NHL TA. And I found one link on the Milton, the Milton, New Hampshire Library Trustees. They have one and it's on the NHL TA. If you want, I can just forward the link to everyone.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I found one. I haven't looked further.
So, okay, no, that's fine. That's great. Thank you. Okay. Um, let's see, where were we? Okay, library director will share a copy of G-Milks Evaluation Form with Library Board of Trustees. Yvette, do you have something like that that you could share with us? Or did you and I missed it completely? Sorry.
I, I shared that with Karen and Janice.
Okay.
So.
All right. So that, was that Karen?
Could, could you just repeat the, what you read we were supposed to do? Because I.
Yeah. So the G-Milks, the G-Milks Board has a, an evaluation they do for their staff. So could you forward us a copy of that to Yvette? That would be maybe helpful to look at. Janice?
When Karen and I met and looked at that, we kind of incorporated it into what Karen had drafted for you. I'm not saying you certainly have a copy of it, but we did kind of use it as part of our template, if, if you will. But yeah, totally, everyone can have it.
Great.
I'm sorry you didn't have it before this meeting.
I felt, yeah, I thought they did. So.
That's okay. No worries. Okay. Library director will share a list of ideas of how we can acknowledge the library staff for their work. Yvette did that. We did the food and water. And we still have masks on our agenda to consider. Oh, we have a sample.
Yes. This is a sample, sample from Janeway, which is like a, feels like a pair of khakis. So there's a filter.
Oh, that's good.
Inside, there's a thing for your nose in here. I can put this in the, I'll put it in the drawer where we are getting your mailboxes. So those will be installed in the kind of vestibule probably in the next week. And then you'll have a key and you'll be able to access it different. But, yeah.
So that would be great if we, if you can like pop into the library, see what you think about that. And then maybe at our meeting, we can make a decision about purchasing them with the library logo, not just for staff, but for other library supporters and whatnot. I'd like a library mask.
Me too.
Actually, I have a question, but not about the masks. Yvette, would the staff like food again? Would that go over? I say that because we only spent, we didn't spend everything that we allotted. Not that we have to, but it's been a couple, it's been a month, two months, whatever. I can go shopping again.
I think people like, I mean.
I can accompany.
I think, you know, it's, it's because we talk about the same thing. We have with Health Trust, a certain amount of money to spend on things for the staff in terms of being more health, healthy, conscious. And do we workshops or, or something like that? And we spent the last of the money on water bottles in library colors. And the water bottles each were like $12 or something and different library colors. And there's a straw option. And you know, because, so because Arfa and I were talking about, well, we can't, you know, that's, we had a lot of money left because of the closure. So it was like, well, we, we don't have enough time to spend that much money on food. But we know that people like it, you know. Yeah, I don't know what kind, or if you want to do gift cards again, you know, but I think, I think people do appreciate that. So, you know.
Well, would you be able to just kind of ask if there's like snacks and stuff that they would like? Maybe something that went over better than something else? And.
I will find out.
And then we can go shopping.
Sounds great.
I'll do it again. It's fun.
All right. Well, three of you can't go because then it's a meeting. So fake your picture. Okay. All right. Great.
We have to share, that's fine. But Janet is the one with the membership. So.
I got a membership too. So.
You can, you can just run into each other there. Thanks for bringing, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, let's keep going. Janet and Soheen will work with Arfa to develop questionnaire to learn more about staff culture and concerns. Any progress on that?
We didn't meet.
Okay, you know what? You know, I think that it's a great idea. And so we're just, we just keep these things out there and life gets in the way sometimes. Library.
I just, I just attended a webinar. And a couple of the other department heads did as well, but we were watching it asynchronously on, on culture in the library, you know, more like staff culture. So I can forward that to you guys if you want to see it. It's an hour. I don't think there was anything new, but it was a good place to start, things that people are talking about. They did also talk about evaluations and how you know, this consultant was saying, I've talked to people in the library who haven't been evaluated for 20 years. And, and she did mention that she thinks the director's evaluation should be a 360. She didn't go into a lot of detail about it. But it was, you know, questioning like it would be the director's peers or the people. And that's really out of the library for a lot of it. So. But it did, it covered a lot. It covered a lot. And so let me send that, I'll just forward it to you because we get the recording and it might help just.
That's great. I think that would just be nice for all of us to have too, to just give us some thoughts, right? Awesome. Thank you. We'll hold a mid-year retreat. Here we are. And we will meet on October 3rd to review library design proposals following RFPs. We are moving forward with that. We will meet more frequently during the budget cycle. I feel like we did a really good job being organized and we knew what was expected. And I didn't, I hope you felt the way I felt, which was like, okay, we met, we got it done. And that it wasn't like, we need to have a meeting constantly through the budget cycle. So I was very happy with the way that went. Doesn't mean we can't improve, but you know, I think we did a good job with that. And we will vote on rescinding the library director's three-year term letter and return to original terms of employment at the board meeting. So you voted, I guess what ended up happening was that you voted to authorize me that yes, we wanted to do that. And we would, I would contact Primex, which I did. And they told me they weren't the correct people. So that's why I ended up speaking to the attorney. So yeah, I think we did a great job. We got through a lot of these and we're moving forward. So any other comments or thoughts on our action items or anything I missed before we move on?
Nice work, everyone.
Yay. Okay. Great. Thank you for everyone's hard work on that. Okay. The next thing on our agenda were the bylaws, which need to be reviewed every two years. Before we get started, I will just say, Soheen, to give you some background. When I came on the board, I felt like I came to my first meeting and it was like, okay, we voted for everybody. And so, yeah, this is how it goes. And I feel like I personally had a chance to kind of see like, what is there? How can I be involved in this? What if I have skills that I can contribute? So I had brought before the board, like my thoughts on, maybe we should have a co-chair or maybe we should postpone the the elections and all these sorts of things. And so after having been on the board for a while, I still think the idea of having a co-chair and whether that's a co-chair or a a vice chair who then like takes over, which some libraries have, is not a bad idea. I don't know that we want to do a deep dive on that now. But I will say something I'd like to see is, and we failed you on this, Soheen, too, or I did, is a better new board orientation. Because I think a lot of my concerns would have been, or my like, kind of feeling like I didn't have a chance, would have been allayed if I had had a chance to sit down with the chair. And if they had gone over with me, like, here are the different committees and what they do. Here are the different positions and what they do. Here's how, you know, what, are you interested in any of them? How could you be involved? I think that that is something that I would like to see going forward, regardless of if we make a decision eventually to change the chair co-chair thing. And I don't know if there is something like that in place that I just wasn't aware of, or if that's something that I should work on, because I, I really feel like that would have made a big difference, maybe a one-on-one meeting, which is hard now, right? But like, and again, Soheen, I'm sorry, because I don't think that I did a good job on this with you. So, but I think that's something that, that we should have in place. Janice, did you want to say something?
I feel like somewhere this is written down. And because I remember two things, when I became a new board member, there was a I don't know, like I said, caught like an introductory to the library board world that was put on by NHLTA. That if you were a new board member, you are encouraged to go to that, which gave me some insight. But I feel like there was another place in our manual that there should be, what you're saying, is a meeting with the chair and the library. Just kind of go over that stuff.
Right. And like, I think that they probably the NHLTA thing is very valuable, but also like, here's what it looks like for us. Here's what we've been doing. You know, and I think that that should be part of what the chair does. And maybe I will look through the manual and see. So I know this, I'm not trying to get off the topic of bylaws because I know that's really important, but I just wanted to express, because I know you've heard me, I'll be like, but I just got on the board and it was like, here are the positions everybody's voted in. I was like, what? What? Like, you know, I don't know anything about this. So I think that without having a large discussion right today about whether we should go to the co-chair, vice chair model, because I was scheduled to go and start to attend some board meetings in, at other library boards. And then nobody had board meetings for a while in person. So if you, because Amherst has the vice chair, co-chair, like there's a couple of libraries that have multiple chairs kind of situations where they, and they transition. I know Yvette's on different boards where the, the transition through the chairs works well too. So I don't want to say that I don't want, think that we should do something like that. But I think a quick way to resolve some of my concerns is a better new board member orientation process, even if it's written down, implementing that process. So. Okay, that was very wordy. I'm sorry. Karen, Janet, do you have anything you'd like to say? Or Yvette, go ahead.
I was gonna say that in, in probably all of the boards that I'm on in the library, there is, and I don't know how they figure out who's, who gets to, there's a mentor relationship. You know, when I became a director, I had two, two different G-Milks librarians, the director at Manchester and the director at Hookset, who became my mentors. And they were like assigned to me. And that was just, I could just go and ask a question, you know. And sometimes we met, we met for lunch and, and that was, okay, what kind of questions do you have? We had a new director manual that we were given, you know. So, so, you know, I know in, in the G-Milks board especially, we talk a lot about succession planning. And this is really what you're talking about. So that there's a smooth transition of power. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I need to, I need to go back to like my video, my mini crossword and spelling bee to like not think about things like this. Okay, go ahead.
But you know, in NHLA, we just had our, you know, I was the, I don't know what, I was the vice president, but president-elect. And now I'm the president. So I, they, you know, the whole year was me doing whatever duties I could as the vice president. But then with the expectation was, okay, next year Yvette's going to do this. And it was really nice and clear, you know. Some in G-Milks, we had a new thing that we did a couple of years ago where you have a treasurer who, who overlaps with a incoming treasurer for six months. So there's a clean transition there. And you know, because that's, that can be complicated if it's an audit year. So, you know.
Yeah. So I think that this is something that the board should consider. I think that it's, I mean, the, even the board being five, that nothing has, is, it's written here, right? So go ahead, Janet.
Well, it, it sounds like we're talking about actually incoming and then outgoing. So, because I, I agree with you. I remember when I came on the board, it, it was, I remember sitting with Jen and Yvette in the clump room. And I got this like blast of information. And I was like, I have no idea what they're talking about. And and then I went to the meeting and everybody was voting on stuff. And I'm like, okay, I got nothing. I'm just going to sit here and just listen pretty much for like the year. And and so I remember thinking, it would be nice if there was, like, just, and again, I know I'm a money person, but understanding the money and understanding like what pot of money spends can spent for something and what pot of money can be not like is designated or whatnot. That took a while to understand. So as well as who are the committee members or who, what, what are the committees? What do the committees do? Why are they important? Stuff like that. Just having, and not just hearing it in our meetings. So it's like, yes, having a, like a, a new board orientation manual or meet with the chair, meet with, maybe meet with the chair, meet with all of us or whoever, it doesn't matter. But something, something a little bit more succinct. And then as well as going out, having, having some sort of succession, whether it's six months, like you know that someone like Deb, you're not coming back. So someone needs to be chair. Who might want to be chair and kind of.
Yeah. So and I think that this is something, we don't need to settle any of this tonight, right? Yeah. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against a manual for the new trustees. Because I think that, I think instead it should be like, how about a packet? Okay. Because a manual feels like a packet and the packet, I know, but like, I want, like, I, and again, this is not, we don't have to get deep, the deeper.
I understand that. I'm just saying that let's not forget that things are, that's all.
Yeah. But I'd like, Janet, here's a flow chart. Here's a block that says specials. Here's what it pays. Here's this. Here's what it pays. I don't want to read the RS. Right. I just want like, but for me, and you know what, I'm not faulting the other chair. I got like a five-minute conversation on the phone, right? While I was walking my dog. So like, I would have appreciated knowing like, hey, here's the plan, not the manual, here's the plan for how we want you to learn more about us. And so I'm going to meet with you. And then we'd like to meet with the trustee that with the treasurer. And then we have this board member who's your, like, you guys said, maybe like your mentor. So that this is a person you can talk to outside of meetings, call them, they, they're here for you to even just, you know, voice your concerns to if you feel more comfortable. So maybe that's something I can put on an action item for me is kind of making up a draft of a plan. And, and I just would like to still say that we even, you know, we need to approve these bylaws. It's been two years. But I do hope that we will consider like, maybe looking at all of this sort of thing. So. Okay. So that was my, I brought that up because I was someone who was concerned about that. And that is clearly outlined in the bylaws. Are there any other things that people feel actually need to be addressed today in the bylaws or changes that need to be made? Yvette.
Um, so several years ago, it was probably really when I first became the director in my first couple of years. There was a problem within the board. And there, there were no means in the bylaws to remove a trustee. So that was something that that board at the time put on their to-do list and it was dropped. So I don't know if it's kind of just preparing for the worst. I think you, you know, if you have a trustee who's really not either not doing their job, there are some guidelines for that for removal. But if you have someone who becomes, let's say more belligerent and is actively working against what the board is trying to do, then it's, you don't have recourse for that. And you kind of, you know, you would have to maybe go to the ethics committee or something. So. I don't know. Just a precaution. It was, it was dropped. So.
Can we say that, is there anyone who'd like to investigate like what that procedure might look like or the wording that we should add to this? Because I don't think it's something we just add in today, right? But maybe it's like something, since we all get along well and are all working in concert right now, it's probably a good time to think about worst case scenarios and how we would phrase it if we did have somebody who was working against us or undermining the board or the library, that it might be worth having some wording in there for what the procedure would be. Is there anyone who'd like to take that on to investigate it? Janice.
A question first. Since we're elected officials, is there any, like, do we have to check that with somebody else? Like.
Well, that will be part of it. Yeah, that will be what this person is doing. This person would be, okay, Janet, we'll do it. So because, just because we approve the bylaws doesn't mean we can't make changes to the bylaws, right? If they're brought before us. And again, I think that it's the kind of thing that because things are good, now is the time to look at it, right? You don't want to be in the middle of a process with somebody who has put us in an untenable position. And yet we have no way to handle it. So thank you, Janet. Are there any other concerns before we move forward to approve the bylaws? Janice.
This is, this is not a concern about changing the bylaws, but I noticed I'm not doing something that's in the bylaws, which is that I need to get accepted minutes to the library. So that will be my task that I need to do.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay.
I had like spelling things.
Okay. This is the time.
All right. So Article four, section four. The board shall establish.
And not mange, not mange. The, the problem with spell check, right? It is a word, but, okay.
Can I ask a question? And I'm asking this because we're talking about this at NHLA with our bylaws, which we have to talk about on Tuesday. Making an allowance, is there one or, or does it, is it covered already for email votes and virtual meetings? Because this is probably going to go on for a while, this, this kind of setup. Because with an email vote, you know, you have to, you know, state the motion, someone has to second it, then you have discussion and then you call for the vote. And we're finding it's hard to track. And then how do you document the email discussion and the vote? We're saying we print them out, save them in the minutes and bring it up in the next meeting. So it's recorded in the minute. So, but it wasn't in our bylaws. So that's just something, I don't know if it's already covered for some of the things with public bodies, you know.
I think it is.
Yeah.
I think it's under some of the right to know stuff.
Yeah. It's under remote participation in a public meeting. And so when it's an, except in an emergency. So with an emergency means immediate action of imperative presence of a com, quorum is not reasonably practical within the period of time requiring action. So if this is treated as an emergency, I think we can still take it as like a.
We're still in this. Yeah, we, I, to the best of my knowledge, on my time on the board, we've never had an email vote. We have had a conference call vote when we had to, we did do that and record that. But I, I don't love the idea of an email vote. I feel like, you know, with this, with the technology that we have now and being a public board, I personally feel more comfortable with us meeting in Zoom if, you know, to have these meetings if we have to. But I don't know.
No, because it says only on a roll call vote and everybody should be at least audible or discernible or if not publicly, because that's what it says over here.
So we're already covered by what it says in there, given these current situations.
So all members of the public body must be able to hear and speak to each other simultaneously during the meeting and must be audible, otherwise discernible to the public in attendance. All votes taken during the meeting should be a roll call vote. So that's.
And that's in the right to know law.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that pertains, I think it's, it's a special thing pertaining to COVID though, isn't it? Or is it? Soheen, what is the document that you're looking at?
Okay. So I, I got this big library member, the right to know law, yeah.
Yeah, it's right to know. And I think that they've made some, there were some things issued from the, I'm not going to get the right name, right? But there were some things pertaining to COVID that kind of clarified that. And it sounds like it was restating a lot of those things. And it sounds like it was restating a lot of those things. So I feel like we're okay with that. Is it, okay? Is there anybody who disagrees, who thinks we need to add something? Now, Janet, did you want to say something?
I, I just have one more spelling issue.
Okay.
It's in the appendix, two bylaws. RSA 202-8:11, what, I guess, I think there's supposed to be an I, it looks like a one. But it should be adopt bylaws, rules and regulations.
Adopt bylaws was and regulations. Got it.
Anything else?
Is supposed that in the same, the same number two that RSA 202-8: Isn't that like Roman numerals, right? It can be. And then a colon, one, or no?
Well, why don't we just look it up? We can just look it up, right? That's not hard.
Yeah. Well, actually, whoever makes the corrections, and if you like, I will. I, I, I have that RSA circ, the, the way it's written circled. And I will go back to original and correct the whole RSA. So the whole bylaw.
Yeah, don't correct the RSA. You might get in trouble. We'll just correct the bylaw and the letters of the RSA.
The identification of the RSA.
Perfect. Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Karen, for offering to do that. So do we have any other changes before we make a motion? All right. Then I'm going to make a motion that we accept the bylaws with those spelling changes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Karen. Any further discussion?
Is it only, yeah, I guess it is only spelling.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to vote yes. Janet?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
And Soheeney?
Yes.
Excellent. Next, we have before us the two investment policies which need to be reviewed annually. Janet, is there anything you would like to call to our attention or anything that has changed in our financial?
So the non-trust fund investment policy, I have no changes.
Okay.
Okay.
So does anybody else have any changes or questions?
There's a section number six. And it talks about initial fund investments needing to be reviewed here.
Wait, which one is this?
Which one are you on?
We're on non-trust fund investment.
On investment policy, number six. It refers to, oh, no, maybe, sorry, I've got this wrong. Number eight, I'm sorry. So once an initial fund investment is made, it is to be reviewed yearly. So I would assume you would bring that to us.
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Yep. Monitored by the treasurer. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the non-trust fund investment policy.
Yeah.
Is there a section?
Actually, you know what? Because of the, because of the change that I want to do in the other investment policy, I, I guess I do want to put it into this policy.
Okay.
So let's go to the what I guess, the library trust fund investment policy. I just have one change. I guess I have two changes. D, under two D, it says bonds, bond funds, and I'd like to write or convertible bonds.
So should it be bonds, comma, bond funds, or convertible funds?
Or convertible bonds.
Or convertible bonds. I'm sorry.
Yep. That's the change. And then I guess under that where it says one, it would say these shall be invested in investment grade, blah, blah, blah.
Is anybody else's formatted like this? Mine is like all over the page with weird spacing and stuff. No?
Mine's good.
Mine is a little bit.
Mine's good.
I, yeah, mine is like all over the place. I don't know why. Okay.
My bylaws were like that, but I have an idea why. Yeah. It's because they started out in pages under the Mac version of Word. So.
Okay.
So, but so essentially for both of the investment policies, I want to add that bonds, bond funds or convertible bonds.
Okay. So where would that be on? So for non-trust fund, it would be two D would say bonds, bond funds or convertible funds?
Convertible bonds.
Why do I keep saying that? Convertible bonds. Thank you.
And then, so.
And then under short-term bonds also, so D and E and on the non-trust fund investment policy?
Just under D.
Okay.
Bonds, bond funds or convertible bonds.
Okay.
Question, Janet. E, E1 says bonds and bond funds. Should it say bonds, bond funds and convertible bonds should be investment vested in investment grade bonds?
Well, these are under the short-term bonds. So no.
Okay.
And then I just have a spelling issue on the trust policy. Under two E, it should say treasury notes, not treasury, treasurer, treasurer notes.
Mine says treasury notes.
Oh, mine says treasure.
Mine says treasure also.
I think I might have an older version that has.
It says treasure.
But that's it. So essentially, all I want to do is just add convertible bonds to both of them. That's it.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Janet before I make another motion? Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we, Janice, go ahead.
The work, when we motion to accept it with corrections, I know they're tiny, but.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the non-trust fund investment policy with the noted corrections.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. Seconds. I will vote yes. Janet?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Yeah.
And Soheeney?
Yes.
And then I will also make a motion to approve the library trust fund. And I should have said approve, I think, to approve the library trust fund investment policy with corrections also.
I second.
Thank you, Soheeney. I will vote yes. Janet?
Yes.
Yeah. Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
And Soheeney?
Yes.
Okay.
This one will have two corrections because the treasure bonds is, should be treasury.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
I will make those changes and I will send them out to the board and Yvette.
Awesome. Thank you. Yvette?
Okay. When you send them to me to post, I'm seeing that they're all slightly different formats on the website. So if, I mean, I can make them the same and then save them as PDF. There's also another document on your page, which is description of officers and their duties from bylaws, which was, I'm assuming was last updated June 2016. So.
Well, maybe that's something we can, I will add it to my list of things to do. I can print it out and take a look at it. We don't need to like print it out and deal with it today. We have other things to do. So, okay.
When you say different formats, do you mean like Word versus PDF or Excel?
I'm talking about font and margins and what's bold, what's not bold.
Uh, that's like, I, yeah, that.
I, I will fix that, at least on those two. I'll fix and I'll send them to you as PDF.
Yeah, I think anything that we can post on the website as a PDF, just because so many people are using so many different ways to access it, then the document looks the same for everybody, right? So that's the good news. I'm going to propose, it is 9:04, I would like to take a four-minute break to get some water and a coffee refill. So maybe if everybody is okay with that, if we can take a quick break and come back in a few minutes, would that be okay with everyone? How about a five-minute break? Is that okay? Okay. I'll see you back at 9:09. So, good. Quick break. And I thought this might be more appropriately discussed in non-public so that we can talk about that we go into non-public session in accordance with RSA 91a32a personnel.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. Seconds. We do need to have a roll call vote to go into non-public and also because we're on Zoom. So I'm going to vote yes. Soheeney?
Oh.
You need to be audible. We just learned that. So.
Yes.
Thank you. That's okay. That's okay. Janet?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
Thank you. Yvette is back with us. Is there any other things to discuss as part of our retreat? Now, I thank you for all of your hard work, for your willingness to meet me on a Saturday morning at eight o'clock. I feel like we were really productive and got a lot of things accomplished. And thank you to Janice and Karen for your hard work on the draft of the evaluation. Yvette, we have a few more changes we're going to be making, we're going, or we're going to look at, consider making. And we'll bring it to our meeting on January and we will certainly share a copy of that with you so you know what it is going forward. So.
Okay. Just a reminder, I sent, I forwarded the agenda for Wednesday. The budget presentation for the library is Wednesday night. So Janet, you're up.
That's fine.
I'll be there too. I'll be there too.
Is it a Zoom, is it a Zoom meeting or a?
As far as I know, it's still an in-person meeting and all of the trustees are welcome to come. But traditionally, it's been library director, chair, treasurer, kind of going over the budget. I don't know what angle you guys want to take.
We didn't change anything.
Yeah.
We did a great job, actually.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to review your notes and see what you want to highlight, you know, Evan and I kind of did the narrative in November, but a few.
I just want to attend one and see what happens. You're welcome to come. Yeah.
I think they're still synchronously zoomed or, you know, through Merrimack cable TV, you can still view it, but if you want to.
What time was that? Seven o'clock?
6:30.
6:30.
Oh, is it 6:30 on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't have, I don't have that email.
I just saw the, it's 6:30 at the Thornton's Ferry.
At what?
At the, at the library, at the town hall.
Oh, I was like Thornton's Ferry, what?
The Thornton's, not Thornton's Ferry, it's the Thornton's, like the meeting room.
Oh, Matthew Thornton.
Okay.
Why were they doing social distancing for that?
Yeah. So that's the reason it's like holding me back, like if it's good.
They had, the last time we were there, they had the benches marked off with places you can sit and they were numbered. And then anyone else who came in after were standing in the back, but everyone was masked.
Except for when they were speaking, but I stayed masked when I was speaking because I'm that kind of masked person. Yeah.
I was just thinking that room can only hold so many people in a social distance world.
It's marked off.
And people leave, and people like, we're leaving after we present, we won't be hanging around. So. So Janet, if you have anything you want to highlight, I mean, I think that really the bottom line for our budget is that we tried really hard to come in under budget and what the trustees are adding to supplement it from our funds, right? That's something we want to highlight that. So, all right. So we shall be there at, I'm going to get there early because I didn't get a seat last time. So. All right. Thank you, Yvette.
Okay.
Anything else? And I was, did I say thank you to Janice and Karen for your hard work on the evaluation? All right, I'll say it again. Janice, go ahead.
Um, we're not sure yet about the next meeting, 6:30 or 7:00 PM, right? Starting?
I think we decided 6:30, but I just wasn't 100% sure when I sent the email to the alternate candidate. And I will send his information to you later on, either today or tomorrow.
And we did it at 6:30 because SMP is coming.
Yes. Yeah. And that was really long last time. And I really appreciate his thoroughness, but you know, it was, yeah.
It was until 10 o'clock, we were here.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, when Karen comes back, I'm going to make.
I, I just had to mark my calendar because I didn't have the 6:30 time. I had seven o'clock time.
Awesome. All right, everybody. Thank you so much. And I will make a motion that we adjourn at 10:47.
I'll second.
Second. And I will say yes. Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
And thank you, Yvette, for helping us out with this and for joining us. And have a great Saturday, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.